I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thanks for coming. Hi, Mr. Keener. Nice to see you. So, we're here tonight to go over One Sole Purpose, the articles for the special town meeting on October 20th. We didn't have a quorum to meet on a Tuesday night, so we're meeting this evening. Unfortunately, due to the change, the moderator, Robert Floyd, can't be here, but we do have the assistant?
Assistant.
Assistant moderator here.
Deputy.
Deputy, okay. And due to the change in time, we were not able to post a joint finance committee meeting, so we have one member of the finance committee here with us tonight, kinda to ask questions on behalf of the whole board, I suppose. So, we're gonna go through this one at a time. I have the most recent copy. And we're just gonna go right through it. You want me to read them all?
No. Okay, I'm gonna take over now, if that's okay, Madam Chair.
Imagine that.
All right. So, what we have here is the update from the last meeting. I have a couple major changes to announce, but first, before that, I know the moderator sends out a newsletter to folks and sent out a draft, 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 draft version of the town meeting warrant. One of the reasons it's not available until it's available online is because it's not in form to be read by others. It's simply in the working stages. So, we'll have to be more cautious of that moving forward. Anyone, whoever wants to see what's on it currently, feel free to come see me. Unfortunately, until we get to this stage, I literally have fragments and sentences that are completely missing and notes that aren't really coherent and ready to be shared with the public, and that's why it's not out and available. The other thing, just to let folks know, because I know there was concern, and Mike from the finance committee has raised this as well, and I think this is a moment to take it to address, is it's very hard to get things together for special town meetings, even more than annual town meetings. You give folks a deadline of August 25th, but then the board was meeting three days later, which means I have three days to turn over anything new that has been submitted as an article. We came up with the due date well before we came up with the date for the special town meeting, and also the date to meet for it. The next problem becomes is even if you have a date, especially when you get to special town meetings, you're resolving any unresolved issues. So, if an unresolved issue comes up, there's a bill that needs to be paid or something else, we have to put it on the warrant, and it takes additional time to get it there. Anything that we don't do regularly gets reviewed by town council, so that's an additional time restraint. Unfortunately, I didn't even have a draft of this warrant together until last Tuesday. At the earliest upon, getting the draft, it went out to everyone, including the finance committee. Numbers have changed. Things have been added. So, it really wasn't a final working product until probably about 30 minutes ago, when it was finalized. And then, I'm sure the board saw the opportunity, and they may wish to change things from here. Any questions on that?
Nope.
The only recommendation I would have to set up a procedure on doing special town meetings would simply be to schedule them regularly in July, and pick a month, either January or February. Come up with a period of time ahead of time before that. So, if the meeting's gonna be in October, say it's the policy of the Board of Selectmen, to have everything due in by September 1st. And then, the same thing with the winter ones. And then, at that point, you have more of a working timeline, once you get things in, then set the date. But unless we have something like that in play, this is just the nature of the beast, being October, November, I'm out of the offices for training. You know, I can only work so many hours a week before I'm useless to the town. So, we do what we can. All right. That being said, because that was fun, and I liked my little sob story there. So, moving on. All right. So, since last time, first of all, if anyone's at home, we do have the projector screen up, so folks can view along with us, and anyone in the audience as well.
Are you in charge of that, Shannon?
I am.
Items that have been, oh, and Shannon's in charge, so if you can't see something, please direct all comments to Shannon from at home.
Oh, great.
Items that have been removed from the draft special town meeting warrants, reviewed at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, noncriminal ticketing. We need a bylaw to add that, according to town council, and that's gonna take a little bit more work. So, we're gonna hold, my recommendation is to hold off on that for now. Dog mass general laws, we were going to add, simply the adoption of them. It's a little more complicated. There's about a dozen of them. It's really hard to figure out what we're actually doing, so we thought it was best to hold off on that. That being Charlie, myself, and I talked to Janine as well, the town clerk. Plus, we now are working on the establishment of our bylaw advisory group, which now has three members and a fourth one interested, so they should be up and running in the next couple of weeks. Solar net metering contract, that was a 20-year contract that would actually give us essentially, as Liz put it, Groupon's for our energy out of a deer field project. I actually went to an energy symposium yesterday. A lot of the communities had reservations about entering into such a contract, because the concern was not knowing at this point in time whether or not that would preclude us later if we had solar panels on our own property, that we could get much more credit for and actually use all of our energy. If, once you're on one, if you can't do both, if you can only do one, if you have to do them in certain order, there were just too many questions, and there's a lot of unknown answers out there. So, we thought it was best to hold off.
So, that's coming off there, but does that mean that we didn't sign into the contract?
That means we haven't signed into anything.
Okay.
Yep. Items we've added since the last meeting, and we'll go into these more detail.
Wait, so if we're just adding them now, can we just start at the top and go through?
Ah, sure. We can do that. All right. So, the first item we have is a demolition delay bylaw. This was on there before. Historical Commission proposed it. It's been through the planning board. Town council has reviewed it. Any concerns from the Board of Selectmen? Any questions?
Are there any questions from the finance committee?
It's a zoning bylaw.
Just checking, making sure.
Mike, did you wanna?
Go in there.
I did. Just checking. Under any of them?
Everyone.
Under any of them that are in the finance committee purview, unless I missed any, it does have a note that says "finance committee" under the article itself.
Okay.
The second article, Article 2, Acceptance of Town Roads. This one's Articles 2 through 4, are three different roads from three different subdivision projects. At this point in time, the planning board meets next week to either approve or not approve, and I don't know if they're gonna approve all. The second roadblock we've run into is whether or not the Board of Selectmen has ever held a formal hearing for a layout hearing for these roads, for the subdivision plans. If we have not, then we are not able to proceed until we do. But since we're unable to confirm at this moment, we want a little extra time just to make sure we're not overlooking anything. Yes, Ms. Liz?
Okay. So, I'm one, so I know where Nicholas Lane is, and there are houses on that road, and it's paved, and there's a sidewalk, and it's lovely to walk down. Old Harvest Road is paved, and there's houses on it, and it's probably lovely to walk down, although I haven't yet. Where's Sarah Lane? Are there houses on it, and is it paved?
I would imagine the answer to that, those three questions, are yes, but I do not know the answers.
Or is that the one that's being built off of Pleasant Street, also right near Nicholas Lane?
I guess I'm just not sure if it's relevant to get into the details of it at the moment.
Well, I guess I'm just wondering, if you're accepting these as town roads. We haven't accepted Bissonette Circle. Is that true?
These three that have been listed on here were submitted to me by the planning committee, or planning board, which were signed off recently by Randall, Camp, the Highway Superintendent. I do not have any additional information. I do not have attachments, which I would need by the time we got to town meeting. They have not been submitted to me yet, because planning board, this is their first round. Without John Furman, they're doing the best they can, but...
I just wondered what the difference was between accepting one now, that doesn't, I don't think, I think, I'm pretty sure Sarah Lane is the one that's off of Pleasant right before.
Isn't it off Gilbert?
Oh, maybe you're right.
Yeah, it's got two houses on it?
I just wondered. If they're, I'll go to the planning board.
Was it third one already, from accepting new roads?
I don't know.
I thought they had to be, like, when we did Red Book.
Red Book.
It had to be an association, because, I think.
Think Bissonette is too, isn't it?
Right.
Right.
So, it might be something that you wanted to check out, because it could be that we did.
So, for those...
I was just wondering. I wasn't trying to open a can of worms.
But based, based on what I'm hearing anyways, we're just passing over these articles. We're not gonna act on them.
Most likely.
So, it's gonna be time to do this.
If that's the case, then it's a moot question. Yeah, something is...
Right, because isn't it all depend on the zoning?
Yeah.
So, for those at the audience who did not hear, the deputy moderator had asked a question pertaining to whether or not there was a current moratorium on accepting additional town roads. And at this moment, we don't have the answer to that question. We'll find out, as long as looking and seeing if we have everything we need to proceed in the first place, and if not, we'll do what we need to, moving forward. Everyone, I'll go with those?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Article 5, 5 through 9 are CPC articles. Good work, Shannon.
Thank you.
All right. So, at the very beginning, you have the balances for each of these accounts. You have undesignated, $929,000 and some change. Historical, $5,518. Open space rec, which is $31,251. And community housing is $225,000. So, the first article, Article 5, is to transfer $18,752.89 for the completion of LeBree Fields. That will come from undesignated account. As we've reviewed last time, this is simply a contractor who did the work who hasn't got paid yet. CPC had sat on the article last time. They wanted to look into it a little more thoroughly. They have. Virginia has a lot of information on this, and Vicki as well has supporting documentation, should anyone have any questions. And we always encourage people, if you have questions before a town meeting, please feel free to come to our offices, and we're happy to assist you and walk through the questions.
So, is LeBree Field complete? This is just work that's already been done?
This is work that's already been done, yes. We have an outstanding bill to a contractor that has yet to be taken care of, and this was originally a CPC project. So, this is finishing up the funds.
So, they're all set? There are no more gonna be floating fields?
I don't think there's gonna be floating fields. If you look down further, there is something that pertains to, well, that's, I guess, Conant Park, so it's a little bit different. But for additional questions on that, Shannon, I would probably direct you to the Highway Superintendent, because he was, he's overseeing those fields at the moment. But to the best of my knowledge, this concludes everything. This was simply another contractor got paid before this one, and he did the work. So, they've been great sports, and the fact that they've been going now two or three years without being paid.
Okay.
At no fault to them. Any questions on 5? Okay. Article 6 is $15,500 for the installation of handrails at the Newtown Hall, the Larrabee building. We actually looked at amending that amount to $25.5, because we're still getting in quotes for it, and because we have to follow Chapter 149 for purchasing, we may have to apply prevailing wages if they're not already in their initial quotes. But CPC will look at that on Monday at their 5:30 meeting to decide whether or not to approve. And if they do approve, they'll move forward at a town meeting. If they don't approve, they'll pass over. One of the things we encourage folks is, if you think it's something that needs to be addressed right away, please put it on. We can always pass over at special town meeting.
That one could be increased to 25.
Well, we're gonna put it on for 25, and the official version that I printed out, we adjusted it to 25 a few minutes ago. Reason being, we're still getting in quotes for the handrails, and we're not sure what the numbers are. But we don't want to put ourselves in the situation where if we have to go with a more costly vendor due to purchasing laws, that we're stuck, and, you know, we're like, oh, it's a great idea to put handrails at Town Hall, so folks don't slip. Oh, by the way, we can only do a third of the project because we don't have enough funds. Questions on that? Okay. The next item is Article 7 for $3,200. Should the Historical Commission fund supplemental costs for moving the historic safe over from Old Town Hall? Folks, remember, last time, the conversation was the purpose, the notion of moving the old safe that was over in Old Town Hall to Town Hall for storage purposes. They ran into a couple of problems. Number one, it doesn't fit through our doors, so we actually have to have a window removed so it can come in, which is gonna be an additional cost. And the second problem is, if it's stored on this floor, this first level floor, we actually have to re-support, reinforce the floors, so that they're strong enough to hold it. It's a very large, very heavy safe.
Is there anything in the safe?
Uh, space.
There's nothing in it?
I, I don't know. Charlie, have you seen inside the safe?
The last, the last time I saw that safe, I was asked to push that safe across the floor in the Old Town Hall, and we destroyed the slate floor just moving it across the floor. I don't believe there's anything in it.
So, if we wanted to know, could we get in it?
The town clerk should have the combination. It was always the town clerk that had the numbers for that.
After all this, I just wonder if there's anything good in there.
We're gonna blast.
So, was it not looked at and quoted originally, because there was money appropriated already for this move?
Exactly, Shannon. It was last, at special, at annual town meeting, was voted and was approved with CPC funds. This is an additional assessment, because when they initially looked at it, they thought, hey, we can open up old doors and pull it in. They didn't realize, you know, they're gonna be stuck.
Wrong place for the question, but why can't it come in, double doors, like here?
Because the problem is, it won't go through, it won't fit through, see these individual doors here?
Wouldn't that be less expensive to repair and rebuild?
Well, that, that you're not gonna be able to take out. Like, see this door right here? You're not gonna be able to open that up. That's not gonna get any wider. You'd have to take out the door frame and the wall.
I understand that. But wouldn't that be less expensive to do that and take out a window and that replace it?
I, I don't know the answer to that question. I would say when, I would say that when Virginia, for those at home who didn't hear the question, the deputy moderator had asked whether or not the, it would be less expensive to go through the doorway than it would be to remove a window and replace the window. But my understanding, and Virginia would have more information on this, is that they've probably looked at it, assessed, and figured out, you know, we can do this. This is something we can do. And I think the town clerk's windows are a little bit wider, if I remember.
So, is that the door that I can't?
They're the same?
The questions I'm asking are premature. Just say so.
Well, that's a great question, and we'll, we'll make sure Virginia has it, so she's able to answer the question at special town meeting. And please feel free to contact Virginia Ahart ahead of time. And like I said, they do have a CPC meeting on Monday at 5:30, if you'd like to follow up with that question.
So, it's, it's the clerk's door, not our doubleders to get in the building. It's the clerk's door that they can't get in?
That was my understanding.
Okay.
But again, I don't do architectural.
If I remember right, that safe is about four feet square. So, it won't, it won't fit through.
Not gonna fit through a standard doorway.
Any of the standard doorways. So, you're gonna take a jam out and everything else to move it. My guess, to answer your question, is they can bring a truck close to the window to lift and bring it in here.
But in order to take one of these windows out, you're gonna do brickwork and everything else and move it?
Hopefully not.
The place to go inside, I think it would be a lot simpler.
Well, then there's the other, then...
Wrong place for this discussion.
This is an ongoing debate, by the way. It's not...
It's not what it's supposed to be.
What are you doing?
I can't help it.
I will make sure Virginia gets that question, but please feel free to contact her ahead of time with it. I'll go with that article. Okay. Article 8 is to transfer the amount $6,000 to the Park Commission to cover the cost of installation of a playscape at Conant Park that would serve the needs of younger children. And this is gonna come from Community Preservation Surcharges Open Space Account. Virginia has a lot more details on this than I have in front of me, but my understanding is, there was a fund that was started years ago when a child had passed away, and they started collecting money for the purposes of creating such a playscape. It would be near Conant, near Conant Park, near the pavilion, a little bit further back, so the kids don't have to go, little kids don't have to go all the way to the large playground when folks are over at Conant Park. Questions on that? Okay. And Virginia even has pictures of what it would look like, if you have questions. The next item is Article 9. It's an $80,000 transfer to the Southampton Youth Athletic Association to fund a portion of the creation of a new Little League field at Conant Park. And this would come from Open Space Account as well. Any questions on that? Because I don't have answers.
I do have a question, and it's, it's not necessarily related to the $80,000. Just, it does come up later in the warrants, the maintenance of these fields. Are they still being maintained by the DP, by the Highway Department?
So, my understanding is yes and no. If folks recall, a few months ago, the Park Commission was before the Board of Selectmen, talking about usage fees for the fields, playing fields, so they'd actually have funds, funds to be able to maintain them. So, I believe part of the answer is that. The other part of the answer is, we get to an article a little bit later, which I think you were referencing, for Park Commission. And at the beginning of last fiscal, or this fiscal year, the Park Commission had initially asked for all the funds to be in the expense account and not split it between expenses and wages, because they weren't sure how they wished to pursue mowing this year. They didn't know if it'd be less expensive to hire out than to use the Highway Department's wages. They've been using the Highway Department, which now means that we have a deficit of about $5,000 for mowing expenses. And in order to move forward and not have to take additional funds from an already unfunded budget of the Highway Department, we had asked the Park Commission if we could transfer the funds over. So, the first part of your answer, Mike, is, my understanding is, yes, they're supposed, they're looking at taking in income from people using the fields, usage fees. The second part is, though, the Highway Department is still mowing the fields.
So, with the Highway Department billing to get those usage fees, like, how are they being paid for? How, how is the highway being reimbursed for their services?
Are they sending a bill to the park?
So, what happens with the mowing wages, and what's always happened, is the, say I'm a highway worker. So, I go out today, and I spend two hours mowing at the cemetery, and then I spend two hours mowing over at the LeBree Field. So, I'll go back, and I'll report to my, my boss, the Highway Super, and we'll note it down, that I did two hours at the cemetery, two hours at the fields. He'll then write, okay, two hours from this account number for the cemetery wages. And then, he'll note two hours from the parks' wages for the park mowing.
Okay.
So, it comes out directly?
Okay. So, here's my question, then. If you're, if the SYAA is taking in usage fees or increasing the cost, the cost to a child to play the sport, that money's going into their SYAA account?
No. Well...
Yes, because if I pay to have my son play soccer, baseball, basketball, I write a check to the SYAA. At what point does the SYAA say, here Parks Commission, here's what we're giving you to mow, so that Randall can take it from that line item? Where, where does that money go to? How does the SYA get their money to those departments?
So, when I said usage fees, the Park Commission is charging usage fees. So, you would pay SYAA, and SYAA would in turn pay the Park Commission. And the Park Commission would then have the funds.
Is that happening?
I do not know if that's currently happening. I do know that that's the plan.
Because if we're transferring money from an account, if we're transferring money from an account, a town account, to the Parks Commission, is that necessary, or because they're not getting enough from?
SYAA is not a town.
I, I understand that, and I, I get it. But I'm wondering, do, Mike, am I not explaining, am I not explaining what I'm saying correctly?
I understand. You're, you're wondering where the checks written to SYAA are ending.
At what point does the SYA take responsibility?
And pay for the field maintenance.
And pay for the field maintenance, or a portion of it. At what point does that happen?
Because we appropriated the park and rec expense amounts, correct? So, if we appropriate it, and there's no influx, how, how is that money from SYAA coming to maintain the fields? Just, this is also related to that. It is unfortunate, we don't have revenue balances to date, because it would be a place to see if that money is getting put in somewhere.
Right.
Something we don't have.
I'm just wondering, is, at what, you know, what point does the Parks Commission say to the SYAA, here's your monthly bill for mowing, or your portion of the bill for mowing, and how do they get the money? I'm just wondering about, whether it's happening or not, I don't know.
This was, just echo that, this was something we had talked about prior. I think we talked about it previous meeting, so just a...
Right. Charlie?
I have a serious concern of giving an association $80,000 with no accountability at the other end.
Agreed.
But it's CPC. CPC can give to the community and everybody else. They're not part of the general fund. They're in their own world.
Still, it's unchanged the fact that I have a concern with this. They may be an entity of themselves, but they're also an entity of the town. What I would suggest is that the money be transferred into a special line item in the town that the association can draw from after they show demonstration of expense.
I, I, I don't know if that's how it's currently done. I'm suspicious, thinking that it probably is done like that, because anything we go to town meeting and create a line item, the line item stays with us. But the right person to ask on that is Vicki. I'm happy to jot down all these notes and also contact all these folks, so they have the questions, because these are great questions. I just don't know the answers.
Let me just, I'm not asking about the mowing from the SYA, because I think they're trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. I can tell you that the SYA is going above and beyond and improving the sports programs for our kids like no other that I've seen in the recent past. They're doing a great job. And so, although I know your concern, I, I see exactly what you're saying. I, I think you'll also see a ton of construction happen at Conant Park, and then you'll be able to see where the money went.
SYAA is a private organization.
Right.
And I believe it's parks and rec that is going to get this.
No, this says it's going to the Southampton Youth Athletic Association.
That's the 80 grand.
Yeah.
But that's not, there's, there's nothing there that says anything about usage fees.
No.
No, not in that part. No, no, no.
You guys all went off on a different.
Yes, no.
Topic. But the $80,000 on this is a transfer to the Athletic Association.
To allow them to build a new field.
Right.
Right. But it doesn't give any oversight by the town, be it Community Preservation or what. What I'm asking is, can Heather find out if there's another way of doing?
That's a private group. It's a town agency, not a private group.
What, what businesses, what businesses are of ours? Right. Exactly.
Exactly. And when you talk about association, and when you talk about associations, are they incorporated?
I don't think so.
So, then we get into the other issue, who's the individuals in liability?
They're redoing the minors' fields. They're making them, they've joined the baseball, Steve Capshaw's the president of baseball, who's doing a great job, but they've joined, like, the Little League group. So, they played in tournaments all summer, and they want the fields to be up to par with what is kind of expected of that legal play.
So, they're sort of just renovating them? They're not creating a brand-new field?
I don't think they're creating, there's no room for a brand-new field.
Yeah, because it says new, creation of a new.
I think, I think the idea, and I think is the key word, is that old minors' field, the one that's in the corner by the swing set, is gonna be redone to be the right size and...
So, it's up to code.
Per se, so to speak, yeah.
Per se.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to go off on a tangent. Just wondering where the process would, that was.
The park belongs to the town.
Yes.
Therefore, it would seem to me that, this is just, again, maybe if, if I'm out of line to my question, say so, or comment. If, if it belongs to the town, it would seem to me that the SYA should petition the town to upgrade the ball field and let the town do it as a line item in the order.
So, I just have one comment on that, now that my brain's thinking. So, the cost of the ball field's $80,000. We don't have $80,000. Which, let me explain this two ways. Number one, if I'm wrong, and it doesn't go into a line item, but it goes directly to SYAA, that means that they're not under the same obligations of mass general laws procurement that we are. If it goes, if it's town money that's staying in the town and that they're having to petition for, what have you, we're likely gonna be on the hook, or potentially gonna be on the hook, to do purchasing, which means an $80,000 project may not be $80,000. You have prevailing wages. You're gonna have to look, you know, we're gonna need a designer. It's gonna, price is gonna go up.
I mean, I think it's great that the SYA is gonna do the things in our parks that we can't do.
I'm just throwing these things on the table.
Good thing you're here tonight.
And it's, it, like, to me, it reads that it's not an $80,000 project. We're paying a portion of it, so it's more than $80,000.
Right.
All right. So, Part B, Operating Stabilization Account, these, this is gonna cover FY '16 and FY '15 pieces. I put that up there for a couple of reasons. The auditors are always looking to make sure it's very clear to understand the distinction between the two. I've reformatted this like a dozen times. I wasn't happy with it being clear, so I've tried a few times. There's a note, just talking about stabilization funds and what they are. The current balance for our operating stabilization account currently is $246,882.58, reminding folks that the purpose of stabilization is, and operating is essentially our checking account, should something come up that we need the funds for in order to continue moving forward. Article 10. So, Article 10 is to transfer $7,500 to the Larrabee building expenses. Larrabee is this town office that we're currently standing in. We've been going over this at numerous Board of Selectmen meetings, and there's actually an attachment later on that gives you some detail of a few of the numbers in which we've already spent. This year, we budgeted based on the cost of maintenance contracts and a few other things that we could anticipate at $12,697, and we're already over $15,000 at this point by the time we get the rest of our bills in. So, we are asking for $7,500 in order to replenish it and hopefully keep us going throughout the rest of the year. These are not things we're luxuriously spending on. Again, it's the gutters. It's a boiler maintenance. We now have hot water throughout the Town Hall, which is kind of an exciting concept. There was a problem. Charlie is looking at me. There was a problem, Charlie is looking at me for those at home, kind of curious, but there was an issue with the boiler that apparently had been long-going and no one had mentioned it, that we weren't, the hot water wasn't actually coming up from the basement. Everyone just assumed it was an older building and took too long to get hot, so they gave up.
So you turned it on, but they don't know it.
Well, they'll find out, won't they?
Heather, and, and is there any consideration about the insulation issue that we had discussed in this money? Are we looking at doing anything with that?
No, because based on the information, what Charlie's asking about is the attic is not insulated in this building on one entire side, which causes us to lose excessive amount of heat, probably.
Is it the side we're on right now? Because it's freezing in here.
Yeah.
Really, I'm hot.
Oh.
But anyway, so Art has had a company come and they're supposed to get us a quote, but my understanding from the way Art phrased it, which was a lot, a lot, a lot of money.
To blow in insulation on the one half of the building?
So I'm thinking, and we didn't specify, because the board specifically said when we asked, we didn't tell them how to do it. We just said, what would it cost to insulate this? That way they can, you know, make a recommendation based on what they think. And based on that, I, I don't know the number, but I wouldn't even be able to predict. I think it's more likely it's going to be a capital project, or I'm hoping more than that, that we'll be able to, once we get started with energy audits, we'll be able to have a better idea and maybe start applying for some grants.
I understand. I'm just looking at winters coming.
I hear you.
Wasn't that attic originally insulated from the door between the rooms below it? So that that attic was just open storage?
They put heating systems up there.
Oh.
We're now heating the sky and beyond.
Heating is up there. Yeah. So yes, the insulation between the ceiling and, and the attic is insulated. The area where the heating units are located now is not.
So on that article as well, it says, see attachments. There is an attachment later on at the end of the warrant that actually gives you a breakdown of what we've already spent and what we've already owe folks for certain labor and contracts. The next item is article 11. Any questions on article 10? Okay. Article.
Is that attachment included?
Not on, not on the printout I just gave you, Mike, but on the one I emailed yesterday, all the attachments. This document here that Shannon, I don't think Shannon wants to scroll to page 30 or so, but if she were to scroll to page 30, you would have that attachment. You'll also be able to find online, once the board approves this, I will post it on the website. Okay, next item, article 11. So this is to transfer $3,500 to replenish the town hall building expenses account. So the town hall building expenses, despite what it says, is actually the police station. We've talked about this quite a bit. Luckily, shockingly, actually, they haven't gone through as much funds as we have in this building this year with things falling apart. But I did break down the numbers again as to what we've already spent. We did budget $10,000. We've had a lot of emergency repairs, problems with the HVAC system, pest control, and a few other things, including the emergency generator repairs that are taking most of these funds from this account. We have not actually got to any annual maintenance of this building yet because we've just been doing the Band-Aid approach as things have been breaking. Again, there's an attachment at the end for this with a breakdown. Thoughts?
What is the cost to repair the generator?
Generator repairs, $2,627 is what the guy quoted me.
I'm sorry, Mr. Interviewer.
Two, six, two, seven, because I think they were only replacing one of the pieces instead of two pieces, because one was broken, the other one, they weren't even sure if they could get. And they just got it in. It weighs 195 pounds, so a few guys will be working on installing it in a couple of weeks.
What was the other $7,000 spent on?
The other $7,000 for what? For that account itself?
You've expended most of the $10,000.
So if you go to the attachment, Shannon, I don't know if you want to scroll, it's going to be like the fourth to the last page, give or take. So I did break it down for you so far on where we are. Blanchard and Daly for electrical work, HVAC work, generator, someone actually had to come out and look at it, water bill, HVAC work, generator repairs, gutter repair and replacements, pest control. We have a plumbing issue that still needs to be fixed. So at this point, as of date, we're at over $6,450. That's either been encumbered or spent. And we haven't, as you can see here, you only have one water bill, that's quarterly, so you have three more to go. We haven't done the trash bill yet for town hall, and that's also, or for the police station, that's also quarterly. And we have additional maintenance that we do to the building on a quarterly basis in the first place, as well as money to maintain the generator as a service contract that I think is about $600 or $800 from the get-go. That's assuming nothing else breaks. Any further questions on that? Everyone's good? Article 10? Awesome. Article 11. Article, oh, we already did that one. I'm so excited I'm going back. Article 12.
Sorry, article 12 is placed on here at the request of the school committee. I was at their school committee meeting last week where they were discussing the amount of money that it was going to cost them to, or the amount of money it did cost them to get the school up and running after inspections by the fire department and building inspector. So they're requesting $15,000 from the operating stabilization account to supplement their budget to cover the costs that they did not expect to spend 10 days before the start of school.
What are the broken-down costs for the $15,000?
So I don't have that in front of me, but I can tell you that the light, it was all of the.
Emergency lighting.
All of the emergency lighting and the light bulbs.
Emergency signs.
Emergency signs, egress lighting, is that emergency, is that the same thing?
Yeah.
The, there's a issue with the cement out front that needs to be.
All the sidewalks, right?
All the sidewalks out in front of the building need to be fixed and/or replaced.
And I believe the alarm system had to be tested.
The alarm system. There's a laundry list of things that have already been done, and I'm sure, Mike, if you want, that I could get it from the superintendent. But they had to be done in order for them to open the school.
What I can do on that, because I didn't have all the information from them yet, is I'm happy to compile it into a spreadsheet just like we have before. Any attachment that's not on here that we need, we can get to folks by the motions and also put on the website ahead of time so they have it.
That would be helpful.
Mm-hmm.
My, prior to coming to Southampton, I'm a former building inspector. So schools and most public assembly buildings have annual inspections. And through this one inspection, it was found that all lights, all emergency lights, which are tested yearly, have failed.
Yes.
Was it actually tested and inspected last year? Do we know?
All I know is that the cost of the inspection this year is around $15,000. And it's a reasonable expectation, I think, of the school to be, to be able to supplement their budget because had, had it been done appropriately year after year, probably we wouldn't be in this place today.
I understand. Thank you.
I'm sure you could ask the building inspector if it's been done prior years. He should have record.
It's just highly unlikely that all emergency lights fail in one year. Right, you walk around, you test them, because they have battery backups, you push the button. I mean, it, it's unfortunate that $15,000 needs to be expended because of.
I will say that they have come up, the school has come up with a kind of work order system, kind of like we're trying to implement, you know, in the town. And so instead of just saying to the janitor as a teacher passes by, hey, this needs to be fixed, there's actually a process now so that some of these things can be avoided in the future.
Is this going to be information that's available for the town to be disseminated? Or is it?
I would say that we probably could get that information as an attachment, like everything else.
Yes. As I previously stated.
I'm sure somebody's going to ask.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Like, like I said before, sometimes, and we talked about this at the very beginning, with putting together special town meeting, it's very hard just to get everything on the warrant. Sometimes it's even harder to find the backup documents that people would be interested in looking at for supporting information. So we will get something, whether we, we probably won't attach all the bills, but we'll at least put on a spreadsheet with breaking everything down so folks know. And we can probably even have the building commissioner and the fire department just write a brief condensed summary.
I was going to say, there is a summary out there, so that could, you know.
But it's like 20 pages, so by the time we're done, my printer's going to break.
Just summarize that summary, then.
Just, you're going to get a question from someone that's asked, if they all wrote at the same time, then we're not doing our job. I'll call. Just something I anticipate.
So article 13, 14, and 15 are all FY15 articles. These are past due balances of bills from FY15, and they were not encumbered by July 15th, and therefore the accountant could not pay them. And we have to go to special town meeting to pay them. You'll also notice they say requires nine tenths of a vote. If you're approving past year's bills at a special town meeting, it's nine tenths. If you're approving them at an annual town meeting, it's only four fifths. I didn't create the rule, I just wrote it.
What is this Eversource bill that, for street lighting? Why wasn't that paid?
Can I?
Oh, sorry.
I saw 13.
I thought you were grouping them together.
I, I was in the overall view, but I'm only on 13.
Sorry.
Okay, so the first item is $650 to pay prior year FY15 bills to John Jacobic for legal services. So last year, the planning board, along with the board of selectmen, obtained the services of Jack in order to get advice and move forward with some issues with the property. And in doing so, we incurred a bill. The bill was not printed until, I think it was written up to be July 30th. It says June again, I know, but I wrote July twice. I'll fix that. But it was written for July 30th, but we didn't receive it until mid-August. Unfortunately, by August, we couldn't incur the bill, so we have to pay it as a past year bill. Anyone good on that question? Okay. The next one is a $2,072 Eversource bill. Eversource sends us bills for the, let's see, our, this, my town office itself receives a bill for the electricity in this building, the electricity in the police station. We also pay street lighting. We get over about 50 bills every pay, every pay cycle. So we do the best we can. But essentially what happens, if the bill comes in, the bill gets paid. Every now and then, especially during the winter months, when there's storms and everything else, for whatever reason, we don't get a bill. This isn't the first time it's happened. It happens regularly at times that we just, we won't get a bill. We don't have a checklist in my office to go through all 50 vendors and see if everyone sent us a bill this month. We generally see a past due balance on it in following months, and generally we check in with the accountant's office. Most of the time, the explanation is, we're told that it crossed in the mail. So generally, it's nothing new for us to have past due balances on bills. We've even found some over time that have gone back three or four years as past due balances. So just because it shows up doesn't mean we always know the origin of it. Vicki was able to find this. We identified it, and now we have it on here to pay.
So this came up because I had questioned this on a past warrants to sign, and I had Vicki look that up. That was how she found out, it was from January. So if you can't go through each one and make sure you have it, when you see a following month's bill that has an overdue balance of 2,100, you probably want to question it.
I do.
So it's.
I go up to.
October, and no one questioned it until I questioned it like two weeks ago when we were signing off on it.
So we, we go up to Joyce whenever we have a past due balance. Generally, the explanation I get is it crossed in the mail. Don't worry about it. Until such time that she tells me, as the accountant's office has access to all records and in case something missed in my office, she can tell you what was paid, what wasn't. Unless she says there's a problem, we move forward.
Okay. Because I questioned that, and that's not how I was explained, but.
How was it explained?
It was explained that it never got paid, and their office is not going to research everyone's overdue bills. They want each department to be on top of it, and eventually they're not going to pay current bills if their past due balances aren't paid.
So how do you get a, how?
So when.
Who do you get a list of the 50 people? How do we get a list of that so that we can figure, like, which department is this 2,172?
This was in Heather's office.
My department.
That's from your office.
Yeah, because town administrator's office pays street lighting, this office, or this building's electricity, and also the police station's electricity. So I get 36 Eversource bills a year.
So all I'm saying is when you, when you.
Along with 36 Verizon bills, 36 water bills, 36.
So Vicki gets the whole town, is what I'm saying. So she shouldn't have to research everybody's overdue bills. Each department should be responsible for their bills. And if it's, if you have an overdue balance and it's gone on for six, seven, eight months, you should probably check back again. That's for any department. Definitely shouldn't leave that to Vicki and, and Joyce's part-time or quarter-time. We really, I mean, I think that's just obnoxious, that it's, it's all the way into October and now we have to ask for prior year, you know, authorization from the town. I mean, honestly, I think it just looks stupid, but that's me. We, we should be all over that.
It just must be a different system to figure out what's being paid and what's not.
The departments just have to double-check themselves. You can't leave it up to Vicki to double-check everybody else's stuff.
And that maybe goes back to Heather, didn't we talk about having each department or one pot of money for everything? Maybe this could eliminate some of that. Mike?
Full disclosure, I do work for Eversource. I was just going to ask the question in relation to Eversource and even the Verizon bill and some of the other bills. Have you thought about or researched consolidating these? I know some, some companies and utilities provide consolidated bills for multiple municipal properties so that you're not sifting through so many and the, you know, lost-in-the-mail situation doesn't happen.
Right. Could you take those 12, or the three different account numbers, which is probably what it is, and consolidate it to one?
And you could probably have it sent online like.
You can't do it anytime before next annual town meeting. It's budgeted that everything is separate. So if you start combining the things, you have to start combining the pools of money. Right now, street lighting is its own account. Gas and electricity for this building is its own account. Gas and electricity for town hall.
It is something that we could do, it is something that we could work towards after next town meeting or in the budget for next year.
It is something. It's actually something we've talked about numerous times, especially at budgeting last year. The problem comes down to just fairness to all departments. It's not fair that I pay the police department's electricity bill and the fire department pays their own, library pays their own, Randall pays their own. It's not fair that I pay Randall's internet bill, and our internet bill, but I don't pay the police stations, the fire stations, the highway, anywhere else.
This is the only bill that got missed out of the whole scheme of things.
Mm-hmm.
Are we really focusing all this time on this one bill, given the scope of how many bills come into this town and everything else?
I absolutely see what you're saying. I think it's a picture for, a bigger picture for a bigger day in, A, do we consolidate everything and how do we make it fair to everybody? I probably, at this point, it seems like we're picking on a bill when really there's a bigger issue at hand, which we can figure out on, on another day during budget season with the finance committee and all relevant departments. Fair enough?
Mm-hmm, which is coming up, so.
Yeah. Okay. 15.
All right, 15. Transfer $100 to Tom Quinlan. He's our building commissioner for FY15 reimbursement expenses. He had to pay for a license last year, and it didn't come across that he should be submitting for the reimbursement till it was too late, so that's why it is here today. He's already been, already has his license, good to roll, but the $100 is hanging out there. Comments, questions, concerns? I did not attach anything, 'cause all of it had his personal information on it, and I'd be spending more time redacting. You'd see a pretty, pretty sheet of paper with the title. If folks want it, though, let me know. I'm happy to supply. All right.
I have just one question in regards to the operation stabilization transfers. We met with the Board of Health at our last meeting in regards to the Sharps program. The Sharps program, from what we could find, was not funded in this year's budget. I don't have the exact dollars in front of me, but...
$2,500.
$2,500. So it turns out that was in the previous landfill budget, and then was removed?
Wasn't the Sharps funded by a grant that they didn't receive this year?
But there was also money allotted in the, was it the highway department or the landfill section of the highway department? There was money in there that was removed. But I guess the root of the question is, we ended up having to transfer money out of the reserve fund for the Board of Health, so that they continue, continue the Sharps program. I was under the impression there would be a warrant for transfer of money out of operation stabilization into the reserve fund to fund that, because this was a previously funded item that was, you know, mistakenly left out. We didn't feel that it was an emergency situation, but we didn't want to let the Board of Health continue without supporting the Sharps program. I was under the impression the warrant would be in here. Is it not in here because we didn't?
It's not in there.
Okay.
So Heather, you go ahead. We were at the Board of Health meeting the other night. Heather probably can make more clear the conversation, since I was there in the lunchlady capacity and maybe not.
To summarize as short as I can, I've been aware of this situation back since Charlie, three, four months ago, that they didn't get the money for the Sharps program. I went to a Board of Health meeting, Charlie was present. I said, "Tell me how much it is. I think this is such an important cause that I'm sure the Board of Selectmen will support, and I believe the town people will support. Let's put it on an article on town meeting." I then followed up numerous times with Jerry. Every time, I was told that she would get me the language for the article. I said, "I don't need the language, I just need the amount." Nothing ever happened. Followed up with an email on September 14th. A week later, she visited you guys and asked for the funds. I was unable to be at the meeting, because I was at another meeting that was mandatory. As a result of not knowing the article was there, or the item was before the finance committee, and I didn't, I wasn't asked about this at all, the finance committee approved the $2,500 transfer. I later subsequently, when finding out about this, went to the Board of Health meeting this week and discussed it with them again, and said further that, in the past, the practice of the finance committee has been not to provide funds until something has been depleted, an account is going to be depleted, before they provide the funds. I had asked again if there was any money that needed to be immediately spent. I wasn't given a clear answer. I also said, "I'm more than happy to put the $2,500 that's needed for the Sharps program on the town meeting warrant for October 20th, so the town can have a dedicated line to this item, because it's so important. Plus, by doing so, they wouldn't have to utilize any of the money from the reserve fund, and therefore, the reserve fund would stay the same balance it is right now and be available for the folks." I was given a letter in my absence, when I was at a meeting yesterday, that the Board of Health voted at that meeting that they did not wish for it to be an article on town meeting warrant. So unless the Board of Selectmen would like to propose an article, either against the Board of Health or to support the reserve fund, I'm stuck in the water.
You are correct. If my memory serves me, we used to fund that through the transfer station accounts. Then what occurred was there were many grants that became available, and Town of Southampton took advantage of that, and that's why it disappeared off the landfill account. Now those many grants have disappeared. They're only going to the very large communities. That said, and to keep this process moving, I'd motion the Board of Selectmen to instruct that an article be placed on town meeting to refund the finance committee's account for that amount of money, so they can fund...
And then fund the Sharps program from the operating stabilization account.
No, basically, we're refunding the money back to the finance committee for their emergency account.
I see.
And we're not getting into the Board of Health's fact, because what's gonna happen is, they're gonna need, if I'm reading this correctly, they're gonna need to go to annual town meeting and create that in their budget next year, but so that the finance committee has the funding they still need. This is the roundabout way of doing it, but at least it puts them more solvent back again for their good-faith effort of trying to make sure the program ran. So I think we need the article to do that.
So you would like an article placed here to fund the reserve an extra $2,500?
Right.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? So the motion, you got it? All those in favor?
Aye.
And yes, this is not the way this should have been conducted.
No.
But I want to bring them back whole, so...
Sidebar, not necessarily warrant-related, but going forward in these situations, obviously, there's a finance committee we will have to meet, but we try to scrutinize to the best of our ability these requests, and if knowing that some of these things and activities happen, we will scrutinize more, and we will not approve on the first day. And depending on the discussion at our next meeting, we may go to the select board to confirm these types of things.
It happens. It happens to all of us, you know?
But if discussions have been, if we were under the impression, and I say we, I shouldn't because the board isn't present, but if I was under the impression that the warrant option was presented, I would have pushed for going that route, as opposed to transferring out of the reserve account, because as we stress and as we look at this, we have building maintenance issues. We have emergency situations that come up with this building, with other buildings, with salary items, with things that, you know, we would like to be prepared for in the future. Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on?
Yeah, quickly. I made a promise, and I don't like to make, I don't...
I have been doing really well with outside notes.
Listen, I made a promise, and I don't like to break them, so quickly.
Articles 16 is... Okay, so just a caveat here and let folks know. So Articles 16 and 17. Article 16 was originally on here. Vicky did send me an email earlier, because these pertain to the cardiac monitor that we currently lease for the fire department. The fire chief had asked to include the cost of what he's already spent to be reimbursed, and also the funds that were required in order to initially set up the automatic payment withdrawal. That being the case, I actually broke it into two articles, because I feel one of them is reimbursing the fire department expenses, and the other one is essentially a line item to pay the rest of the lease off. And I didn't want to get confused, I didn't, you know, we try to keep things as clean as possible. I didn't even see this or look at it until about 4:15. I did send Vicky a text, but it was only a few minutes before this meeting, so I'm gonna assume this as well. I mean, we can always amend if we need to. Okay, to vote to transfer the sum of $34,886 to the fire department for the purchase of a new cardiac monitor for the ambulance service, and this should come from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation account. The only thing you can spend that money on is ambulance-related stuff, and that's what this is.
Are we paying for this if we're leasing it?
It was, actually, Mike probably can answer more, but essentially, the fire chief, when he was looking for a cardiac monitor, had gone to the finance committee for guidance. The lease came up, and the suggestion, at least as communicated to me, was that they would wish to pay for it whole whenever they got the earliest chance, but Mike's jumping at the bit to talk here, so...
The cost to lease over the life of the lease was slightly higher than purchasing new, so due to budget constraints and not having the capital lying around, we chose the lease option with the hope to be able to transfer money and pay off the lease early.
How much more?
It was less than $1,000, I think. The, I remember, I think John Martin was involved in the conversation. We had amortized it out, and it was, it made sense with the current constraints to have the two monitors to go this route. Yes, these are, I don't know the exact inspection and maintenance policies on these, but they, there is an included service agreement with these. We had talked about that with the chief, so...
Don't quote me, but my suspicions on the service agreement is the same for a lease as it is for purchasing it.
Correct.
So there's no difference?
Yeah, no, and I haven't read that, to read it that thoroughly, but the simple reality of it is, we have funds in the ambulance account to do this type of things. Clean the books up, get it done, save a couple of bucks on the other end.
Right, 'cause a lease was just a quick fix to get it to them, until they had the money.
If you look at our records, three years ago, two years ago, we bought another new one for the other ambulance.
And the, I guess the end result, too, was to have essentially two brand-new or one-year-old ambulance monitors in the ambulances, so...
Any other questions on Article 16?
Uh-uh.
So Article 17 is similar to transfer $1,187.74 to the fire department expenses for the reimbursement of expenses incurred for leasing the new cardiac monitor for ambulance services. So that includes the $350 setup fee for automatic withdrawal, and also the current amount of leases that they paid so far, or leased, which I calculated out, too, based on the numbers I had, $8,374.
Does the attachment, or do you know offhand the balance of the ambulance reserve account?
Oh, you're looking for the balance of the ambulance reserve? I don't know that answer, but I do know I have the lease piece up here. It should be one of the last items, Shannon.
Okay.
Have the ambulance receipts reserved?
I don't know what the balance is, but we can find out. We'll make sure we include it in the motions for information.
I personally like what you did with that.
Did with what?
Putting a separate article in for reimbursement.
Oh, yeah, well, you know, my concern was that folks would get confused and get frustrated with understanding the two, and, you know, sometimes people may vote for one and not vote for the other. You just want to make sure you give things the best shot at, as you can, and represent clearly. So that's the payoff quote. But that doesn't help you with the balance of our account, but that gives you a payoff for information. Okay. All righty, where else? Any other questions on the cardiac monitor? Everyone's good? Okay. Article 18 and 19. So my office was without an administrative assistant to the town administrator for the months of July and August, which means I'm not going to be using my entire funding in my wage lines. Plus, I actually, my assistant's working less hours than what we had originally budgeted. That being the case, we have a little bit extra funds to play with. I did sit down with Vicky to go over things. We've talked in the previous weeks. I just did a purchasing class in September. I have another one in two weeks, and I can do a third one for $695 and finish my certification. I would like to think it's the most timely of anybody, 'cause a lot of folks have been doing this for 15 years and are still working on their certification. And really, it just comes down to having the funds and being able to do the training. We have the funds without having to go back to the general fund that's already been appropriated for that office to utilize for that purpose. And also gives me a little extra, so I can go to a few other trainings as well, before it gets really tight. That is Article 18, to transfer $1,500 to the town administrator expense account from the administrative assistant wage line.
Does that zero out the wage line?
No. The wage line has started here. It's started at $13,500. Velda is currently working, but even if Velda worked 16 hours a week at her rate of pay, and go, which is $15, and goes until the entire end of the year, even if she did extra hours, like, at this point, I could have her work, I think I calculated almost 300 extra hours throughout the entire year, if not, a little bit more, and I'd still have a little bit extra.
Okay.
Article 19's on the same premise. It's actually to transfer $750, and I say it goes to employment advertising. What am I talking about?
Can we just go back, 'cause I just got a text, and one of the townspeople would like to know, how much have you already spent on your trainings so far this year?
$495 times two, plus $450.
To $1,300.
Plus seminars, probably another three. And then the rest of that line actually has to do with supplies, so if I need ink in the office, I need paper.
So about $1,500.
And really, what it is, is we're using the funds to be able to put me through the training now, as opposed to having to budget it next year.
Right. And the other question was that it seemed that you were looking to leave the town, so why would we invest this much money in your training if you're, you know, avidly looking to leave the town?
So I think that that's, you know, probably maybe a question not associated with this, necessarily.
Well, are they gonna want to transfer the money, knowing that they're training her when she's trying to leave?
I think if you're gonna ask the question about training one department, you should ask the training, ask that question of all departments. Are we training people with the town's money in anticipation that they're gonna stay? Or are we training the town's employees in anticipation that they're going to leave? I think if it's fair to ask, if you're gonna ask one department what they're spending all of their money, how much training they have had, then I guess I want to know how much training, how much money I've spent as a town member to train all departments.
There you go, good answer.
We good to move on to Article 19?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Article 19's for $750 to employment advertising. The reason this came up was succession planning. We've been having a lot of difficulty. At last year's budget season, I've had a couple people confirm that I've asked every single department if they anticipated that anyone would retire or likely leave during the next fiscal year. I was told by everyone, "No, no, 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 no," and that has not helped you at all. One of the reasons I had asked last year is the purpose being, I wanted to make sure we budgeted in order to be able to advertise for these folks and their jobs. What ends up happening is it's already very burdensome in the individual departments. If Charlie's working for me, he's been here 10 years, he's leaving. As of right now, I'd have to pay him out vacation that he's earned so far this year for next year, plus an unused vacation this year, and that's gonna come out of my budget. But we can help departments at all with the advertising for $50 to $200 a whack. I figured it's as, it's as much incentive as we can put, and plus, it gets us to the idea of, as Liz, you talked about earlier with the bills, starting to consolidate things, so there's a dedicated account for stuff. It doesn't have to be called employment advertisement, I just, that was the only language I came up with in my brain.
So what, every department would use that same account to advertise?
So for the assessors' office, when you guys get the approval for the posting, you would come to me and you'd say, "Okay, I just submitted the bill. When it comes in, I'm gonna bring it over." But you would tell me how much it is, the best you know it, so, you know, I can pencil down that 150 or whatever. But it also helps, because on the larger jobs, you want to always advertise on the Massachusetts Municipal Association website that reaches all other government officials, and that's about $150 for that piece in and of itself. Any other questions on those? Okay. So Article 20 is to transfer $4,801 to the insurance general account to correct a negative balance, and that fund's gonna come from the workers' comp line. So this year, we switched to my insurance. We used to have Larry Joseph Insurance Company, and we switched. We actually saved funds, but the difference was, certain line items are higher than others, but ultimately, the total balance is less. We do pay three different types of insurance to the one company. We have general insurance, workman's comp, workman comp insurance, and we also have insurance for police and fire. Police and fire and general insurance are actually grouped together, and workman's comp is separate, in two different line items that we have. That being the case, we had budgeted the same numbers a little bit higher than the prior year, assuming that, you know, rates would stay about the same, and we'd need about the same amount in each of those accounts. It turns out that the overall cost came in lower, but the amounts were slightly off, so this is just to correct the balance of one line using the other. Questions? Was I convoluted? Everyone understood that? Everyone good? Okay. Article 21, transfer park commission expenses. So this is something we started talking about earlier with, when Mike had brought up about the SYAA and the Lubree fields. So as I said before, at the beginning of the fiscal year, park commission had originally placed, and I'll double-check my number here, I believe $7,000 into its expense line in the anticipation of probably hiring out, or possibility hiring out for mowing. They end up using the highway department, and there's currently no money in the wage line, so it's running negative. And if it's not recouped, then what's gonna happen is, from Randall's already under-budgeted budget, he's gonna have to take another $5,000 for wages, which he didn't budget for.
Do you know the annual cost for the reimbursement to the highway department for the mowing that takes place? Like, so if Randall mows so many fields a year, what does that normally cost? Do you know that offhand?
No, because if, as we talked about last time, or last year during the budget season, is, we have some information, but we don't have all of it. So if I have three people who are able to mow, but I only have two of them available, and Liz happens to be a higher-wage worker, my costs are gonna go up higher. I don't have a set rate of, you know, it's gonna be $50 an hour based on all my wages and everything else filtered in, so it varies. Plus, it depends on the year. If it's overly sunny, overly rainy, and the grass is growing like crazy, and we're mowing every week, how many games are going? Like, I think we're trying to get closer to statistical data every day, but we're not there yet.
Has there been any consideration for transferring the money directly to the highway expense?
So at the budget season last year, I spent a lot of time on this subject. I actually spent a lot of time on this subject the year before as well. I have been a high advocate, or a heavy advocate on this, and a few other of the finance departments have been as well, and the board, I believe, had voted to leave things the way they were. But the idea is the notion that Randall's currently taking from various different accounts. There's actually no... There's actually no money in his one account to cover everything. So you have the park wages, you have cemetery commission, you have supplemental wages from the water department when the guys do water work. So it's, it's all over the place. This was brought up before, I think George even mentioned at one point, DPW. I was in a meeting with someone today and they were saying, oh yeah, Grimby. They did a DPW, established it a few years back, and it's all under one piece. The argument against doing that this year, despite the, you know, lack of the DPW title, was the notion that it's always been easier to keep track of how much these things are actually costing. Once upon a time, someone wanted to know, how much does it cost for parks? How much does it cost for cemetery? The comment I had and the concern I still have is the fact, you, you can say, you know, we'll budget that amount of money, but then it comes to the point where you either tell Randall, don't mow the lawn, or continue mowing the lawn and just figure it out on your wages, which is generally what they do. So these numbers in no way, I believe, accurately reflect what the actual expenses are for the work from the highway department. It's just what we've always given them.
So I have two questions.
Okay.
One, how much money did we give to the operating stabilization account after the free cash was certified last year?
I believe the breakdown in our initial numbers were 35,000, or I'm sorry, not 35,000, 35%.
But you don't have a dollar, you don't know the dollar amount?
No, not off the top of my head. It was at least 100 and something thousand. Because I think we came in between five and six last year for free cash. I've seen so many numbers this week, I can't tell you what my own birthdate is at the moment, so.
Okay. I thought I had another one, but I don't.
You don't have any additional questions? So what I will do from here, and then I actually need a board vote before we leave, but what I will do is I will add the item you guys voted on in order to refund.
The reserve account?
The reserve fund operated by the finance committee, the amount of $2,500 from operating stabilization. And then, one thing I would like to do is, if, if possible, if the board would mind putting in their motion when they're approving the whole warrant, the ability that should Vicki tell me that I can't separate the two things for cardiac monitor and I have to put them together, that maybe we could just say that the total between, the board approves the warrant and in relations to Articles 16 and 17, that the total amount not to exceed the, the sum of the two numbers in the event that I have to put them into one article again. I just, I just wanna make sure I verify with Vicki. I don't wanna outstep anything or make an error on that one, that we can't fix a town meeting.
Are there any other questions or concerns about any of the articles on the warrant? In that case, I would accept a motion and you can stop me whenever I make a mistake. I would accept a motion to approve the warrant as written, including the addition of a warrant for $2,500 to refund the reserve account as well as the ability to amend Articles 16 and 17 in the event that they can't be separated not to exceed the total amount of 16 and 17 combined. I'm just writing.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
It's a question, I, I mean, I, what am I to release administrative articles for here?
So as I went over at the very beginning, for those who didn't hear the question. You were, but that's okay. You were sitting right there, you've been there before the meeting. We've already been chatting. All right, so. You know, I'm, I'm on god only knows what hour at this point.
Go ahead, what happened to them?
So anyway, we went over the, the administrative things at the beginning. I mentioned two things. Number one, I said, as I work on a thing, I send it to those who are, have an interest in it. So the town clerk, the Board of Selectmen, finance committee members, treasurer, the accountant, anyone else I feel who needs to know, including the moderator. The problem is, the moderator submitted this warrant template, draft, draft, draft. Mike will tell you, this is probably the 15th or 16th draft in like a week and a half.
Oh, the version you have is premature.
Two folks and they printed it out.
That's all that it was. Yep, that's it, okay. So there's a motion and a second to approve the warrant for the special town meeting on October 20th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would accept a motion to adjourn and should it be noted, I'm only 17 minutes over my timeframe.
I'll remember that.
I know you will.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for coming.
You were sitting right there.